All right, bro. We're gonna try to get started.
The meeting has started and it is recorded, so.
All right. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Girdon School District Board of Directors. We'll now call the meeting in order. Cassie, could you establish that we have a quorum? Okay, with a quorum established, we'll start conducting business. Brother Roberts, can you lead us in word prayer, please?
Most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we've just come to you tonight. Father, thanking you for the many blessings that you give us in our life. Father, I pray that each one here tonight understands that their position that they, that you put them in is a blessing. Father, oftentimes when we're, when we're in these situations, when we're in work and just daily life, we overlook those blessings. They become just that. They become words. Father, I pray that you lay upon these, every one here tonight, that they are in a spot that is blessed by you to benefit those that are of younger age and less than them, to lift up their fellow people. Father, tonight, I pray that you just lay upon some comfort and, and some guidance here while they make decisions tonight that will benefit so many people under them. And Father, I just pray that you forgive us of our many sins, for we know that can only be done in Jesus Christ. So I pray that, Father, you just forgive us of those and allow us to just seek guidance from you in everything that is done. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. We'll now stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the principals have their special recognition, so. Who wants to go first, high school or elementary?
All right, we have some very awesome, wonderful, hardworking students and staff that we'd like to recognize. For kindergarten, we have Emery Morrow. And I know for a fact Emery is a hard worker. I saw her working and writing H today, working so hard. All right, and for the elementary building, Sawyer Dempsey. So our staff at the, at the primary building, Ms. Rachel Key. And she is always very, very willing to do whatever is needed. And Ms. Paige Jones is at the elementary building and she's not here tonight, but she is a very hard worker and very willing to do whatever. And at the primary building, again, we have Penny Massing. Anybody that's been in the primary building this year, Penny is invaluable. I told her if she walks out, I'm going with her. She's a very, very important chart to our school. And the, in the elementary building, Mr. Keith Dale. He's new to our district, but he and his wife fits right in and the kids love them both. We have one other quick recognition. Do you want to do that? So we had some of our students who are now sixth graders and they were fifth graders when they submitted this. But they entered a poetry contest last year and they were chosen amongst hundreds of other entries. And Ms. Sparks can probably explain a little bit more on that. Come on up. If you want to give a little tidbit on the contest they entered.
Yes, so I have some notes here. Uh, the student, we had several students from different grade levels, fifth and sixth, entered a poetry contest. And this was the American Library of Poetry. And three of our students that are now sixth graders were chosen to be published in a yearly book of poetry. And of course, we'll have to get several copies, you know, for our school. And they also, because they were chosen to be published in, in the book, they are entered for first, second, and third place, possibly $500 cash prize. So we'll find that out a, a little bit later. I'm very proud of them.
We are. We're very excited to recognize them tonight. So when I call your name, if you'll come up, and I do, we do have a certificate for you. But we also want to give you a minute or two to read your form. Kira Ellis, you are first. And it just so happens your seventh grade literacy teacher is here, so she big expectation.
That was for softball. When you find something you love, stick with it. For me, that was softball. Hit the ball, run to base, try not to get out, and then slide it home. If you win, you walk through the gate as a winner. And if you quit, that's okay. Just don't forget that day.
Our next one that we want to recognize is Bobby Ski. Come on up.
I'm gonna take a picture real quick.
Okay, he's ready now. He's ready.
Humans say they're scared of monsters, scary things, but other, even other people. But in reality, every one of us is a monster. The main cause of deforestation, humans, main cause of murder, humans, cause of 9/11, the deadliest, one of the deadliest attacks in U.S. history, humans. The list goes on, but from all this information we can gather that we are actually, all of us are actually the monsters. In the Bible, it says that humans are evil by nature. Even though Jesus Christ died on the cross for our sins, evilness, and wickedness, we are all still monsters.
And last but not least is Ms. Raya Evans. Come on up.
When I went up, when I went outside and saw the sun smiling at me, I said, what's your name? The friend said her name was Sunshine. I said her name and was beautiful. She asked me what my name was, and I said my name was Raya Evans. Then the, then Sunshine said, well, hello, Raya Evans. Then I said, hello, Sunshine. We both smiled at each other. Then I walked to the park and Sunshine was in the sun, smiling at me all day long.
For the high school, we recognize, we're recognizing today two students. One is here. And I don't see the other one, but we also have their seventh grade ELA teacher here. And I want her to say something about each one. So the first one that we are, student we're recognizing is Michael Bruce. And he's not here, but Ms. Storms, would you say something?
Yes. Michael started the year just really positive. He attacks everything just head on. I was really proud of him because I just, he had said like he was kind of discouraged with learning. And he has worked extremely, extremely hard. And he's just even proud of himself that he's in a position where he can be proud of his grade. And so I was just really proud.
The next student is also a student of Ms. Storms. And I will say that this is the most mannerable young man that I have ever met. And this is Boston Orisburn.
Boston, I have him at the end of the day. We're all just super tired and ready to go home, especially after the first couple of weeks. But he literally dedicates every single waking minute to making sure he takes care of all of his work. He makes sure he's respectful and he just makes sure he gets the job done and he can be proud of it.
And so next we're going to recognize our staff, our classified staff member who has done a little bit of everything in the district since school started. She is assigned to the high school, but she has been sent over to the primary school, which is totally foreign for us to deal with pre-K and kindergarteners. And she has taken on that task and has done an amazing job. And she's not here tonight because she is working and her name is Jennifer Taylor. And we appreciate it. Our class, our certified staff member for this month, we're going to recognize. This young lady is an, a doer. She does, she never turns down a, a task or a request to do something. She is a leader. She's a wonderful mentor to our new teachers. And I was her mentor when she first started teaching. So it makes me very proud to be her teaching mama. And her name is Ciara Storms.
We're gonna retire for executive session. We've got some personnel issues. Y'all keep receipts. We'll be back.
Those of you who have been recognized, you do not have to stay for the remainder of the meeting.
We're now done with the executive session. We'll now call the meeting back into order. We need to consider the action item discussed in executive session.
I think a motion that we approve, that executive session motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. All right, the next item is the approval of the previous board minutes.
I think we may adjourn the August 20th, which comes before the remaining four committee minutes.
All right, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. All right, the next item is the consideration of the financial report. And Blanca, can you help us out with that?
Your reports, this time, in your packet, so on page, starting with on the financial section, starting with page one. That, that is the joint package for the 2023-24 school year. That starts with July, starts in July. And as I, as I've kind of mentioned a couple of times, we've been doing a lot of behind the scenes flows out. And so it goes all the way through the things that would have occurred for the 23-24 school year that we would have actually finished up in pockets. And so you can see at the very bottom, the very bottom row on page one, that's how our legal balance, how we've, we started the year. And then with the beginning balance and the ending balance, how we would have ended the year. And you can see our revenue and our expenditures. You'll see a lot of non-revenue and non-ex expenditures. A lot of that is transfers we have to do. And so you'll see quite a bit of that on those. And then the rest of that, the same way, you'll see how each fund started its year and how each fund ended its year. And then of course, on page five, you will see just our normal financial report for the, uh, August. And you can see that's the normal breakdown. And then starting next month, we'll be back to our normal reports with all the budget amounts in those. And then of course, page six through nine, really our board's report for the month of August.
Brother, I got one. The way I understood that declining enrollment funds, it was a one-time money. Is that correct?
It depends. It's a one-time money unless you decline again for the next year.
Okay, so you can do it. You're, the way I understood it was just one time declining. Yeah.
It keeps declining every year. You get that for that one year. And then if you, you know.
So you're saying if you raise back up the following year, then you wouldn't get it?
You don't get declining enrollment and student growth money both in the same year.
There are more questions about the financial report?
I can actually, I approve our August financial report.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All in dissent, same sign. That motion passed. Under our business, legal, finance, and consider agenda, we have the 24-25 proposed budget. Miss T. Mole, take that over.
I'm gonna let Rhonda take that over.
Uh, you shall have last one page of our budgets. And I don't know how much, how much detail we want to go into, but you can see 24-25, you can see how much we have budgeted on page one. You can also compare that to last year's budget and also the last year's actual. There is still, we still budgeted to transfer money into the building fund. Hopefully, we don't have to at the end of the year, but, well, no. We budgeted to transfer money out of the building fund into the, the operating fund. Hopefully, we don't have to. I usually try to budget, trying to think of worst-case scenarios. So hopefully, all of those don't play out. But I usually budget expenses pretty high and I'll try to budget revenue a little lower. So hopefully that's, we don't have to transfer out of operating, out of, out of building fund into operating. But that is what we had to do to make that budget balance for the year. And then page two is really just a different breakdown of those expenses. It kind of breaks them down by account codes. As far as certified salaries, classified salaries, and very different options of accounts that we use. And again, this don't have a heading on it, but again, you, you can see how much is budgeted, how much was budgeted last year, and how much was actual. And then page four is just some of the, our federal funds, how much we have budgeted and how much we had actual last year.
Run on this 23-24 between the budget and the actual, we actually can't, you know, it showed we went over. Do you expect that again this year?
And a lot of times what happens is we start the year right now, but we have grant, we have people writing grants all year long. And so a lot of times that's what's happening is we set the budget right now, but we're blessed to have grants all year long, but it also increases your expenses. And so that's why you're seeing some of that differences, why you've got a lot more expenses. And you might have had budgeted because those grants have come in during the year.
So that could change, especially if we get this safety grant like that.
If we get that safety grant, it's probably gonna be a federal grant. I'm not positive because I'm not seeing the account codes for it. I, I know it's running through the, the federal system, so I'm checking that it's probably gonna be a federal grant. It's gonna run through, not through the, the, what I call the state level, but.
Okay.
Here, one more question. Independent of those projects and the things, the day-to-day business, is our incomes and outgoings seem healthy to you?
Well, right now we're in declining enrollment. And as long as you stay in declining enrollment, it's not gonna be, it's, it, on a healthy side. I mean, we've lost, we lost 57 students from last year to this year. When you look at that $7,771 a student, then that's a significant decrease in revenue. So as long as you are keeping up with declining enrollment, and that means you've got declining income. And so until we can figure out how to keep our, you know, our numbers steady, we're gonna continue to have declining.
So 57 total losses, and that's taking like what we gained back in first, like, we lost 57, but we're not.
From where we were last year, we, we lost 57.
From enrollment date. So can we get paid by like the third semester, what, right?
The average of the third quarter, the average of those three quarters is what they're pulling our enrollment from. So that's why the fluctuation, if we, we go, you know, we get a whole bunch of new kids in August, but they're not still there in March. That average is what's gonna hurt us.
What, what is our enrollment like as of today, this month, or September?
Five, honestly, I, I. Yeah, something like that. Because I know we've bounced, we've had a few bounce in and out in a very short period of time.
Yeah, yes. I think we were like six, 26, 13, maybe thirteen, quarter last year.
And then it's just kind of, yeah, falling off.
Any more questions about the financial? The budget? All right, the next item is the changes to the supplementary salaries schedule.
Yeah, and that's basically just one change. And it's to match up, like last year, the board voted on the athletic gate that for certified, it would be 35 a night, and for classified, it would be $13 an hour. It just wasn't put on the salary schedule. It's in the board minutes that it's there. It just was not put on the schedule. And that's why we went back and Rhonda and I looked at it. And for the basketball bookkeeper, it's putting the same thing for the basketball bookkeeper, 35 for certified and 13 an hour for classified. And that's the only change there. I said, that's, that is the only change. The athletic gate was already changed. It just was not listed on the sou, on the supplementary salary schedule.
You don't have any questions about that? We'll get a motion to make the change. We can, and it's all seen pretty simple. Why don't we do it, why don't we do it that way? All right, the next item is some policy changes.
On leave.
Yeah, employee leave.
Yes, and it, it will make changes for both certified and classified. With going to the four-day week, it's kind of throwing some kinks into the way that we count days because teachers are, technically, we have 190-day contracts. But now transitioning that into the seat time of 1,068 hours and making our days longer. Now, when a, when someone takes a day off, it's not actually a day. It's a day and a quarter. And if they take half a day, it's like .625. And we saw some conflict, some conflicting issues there because you had teachers and everyone else who had every month you got a sick day. And then you had three personal days. Well, if you're taking 1.25, there's no way to take your three personal days. So it was kind of, why do we have the separation there? And I got to looking at what some other school districts were doing. And a lot of districts have gone from having the personal day separated from the sick days to just having that leave. PTO is what, mainly what everybody's calling it. So just switching it from pulling the personal days into that sick time and just putting it all under one policy of PTO. Now, there's four policies instead of two because you have one for licensed and one for classified. But because we're pulling, because we pulled the personal part, personal was in there with professional leave. And we wanted to make sure that they still had that option for the professional leave as well. So that's why there's four policies there instead of two.
There are questions about.
There is no sick.
Right, right.
But there's a few places in here where sick is still.
Yes, it does. I was trying to go through and strike that through. And it didn't change anything with that policy that has been in place for employees who were hired prior to July 1st, 2008, receiving that honorarium when they retire. It did not change that.
Either they should stay a day then, if they're front-end or not?
Those days only, those days would stay, those for the honorarium would just count as one day, correct?
But it wouldn't transition into a 1.25 day?
Well, it's gonna be whatever the balance of their lays, I mean, so.
They still get one day, but when they take it, it's actually counting as 1.25. So it's.
More questions about the leave policy? And we'll move forward to the honor roll policy update.
Yes, and this is, like I said, Ms. Ledbetter, Ms. Hart, several people at the high school worked on this one because again, we're moving to some different pathways for graduation. And the requirements for what the state is going to consider a college-ready graduation or diploma look different. So in trying to keep up with the trend of that and trying to make sure that we line out exactly what it takes to be an honor grad and all of the qualifications that go into that, they went through and lined everything out as far as what specifically it takes to be an honor grad and when salutatory and valedictorian are chosen so that everybody knows exactly when those numbers are pulled. Is there anything else, Ms. Hart, that you want to add on that policy?
We took a long time looking at it to make sure that our students were aware and were understanding the requirements to be honored graduates and honored students. So that was important.
And this was discussed with students last year during handbook discussions, those students that were on handbook committee. A lot of this, I mean, some of it came from them.
A lot of it came from them. And we also looked at, at other schools, see what their requirements were as far as honor graduates and salutatory and valedictorian and such. And kind of talked with our students in our handbook committee and the people in the handbook committee and decided to apply.
Yes, and had Ms. Ledbetter look through all of that and try to line it up with college requirements and all of that as well.
Any questions about honor roll policy? All right, we moved more forward to the board, the board transfers. Do we, do we have?
We don't have any.
We don't have any board, board transfers. Why don't we lump all this together and just vote on it as one package?
Make a motion that we approve the, since legal finance and constitution, the A30.
Can we have a motion?
Second motion.
All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion? All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion say aye. All in dissent, same sign, that motion passed. Then we go to under item thirteen, we've got Cave Elementary School data report.
That's what Ms., uh, Riley handed that out. Before.
Can you walk us through that, Ms. Riley? Uh, can you walk us through this?
It's something that's, we are still collecting a lot of information on our state, but we're anticipating in the next few weeks that our scores from April will be out, so that's gonna help us have even more data. But in K through the third grade, we just started the new assessment that's been passed down to the state, the Atlas Screener. So it says K two in there is math. K three and math and literacy.
K two, uh, was math and literacy, and then three was just literacy.
The third grade was only screened for literacy. But K two was screened for both, both math and literacy. And it's new today, so it's kind of changed the information we've got from the state, because we were supposed to get the data immediately. But now they have shared it, we're expecting that data to be out in October. So hopefully, we have it in time to share it with you at the October meeting. But we did another literacy assessment, which is what we call the Star Literacy Assessment, which your kids probably took. It's connected to Renaissance, which your kids probably knew as AR. Yarning, and so the star test, it kind of assesses their literacy foundational skills and comprehension. And it gives as the individual, individual students grade equivalency, which grade level they're reading at. So that's really beneficial to us, and we're making, um, plans for tutoring and plans for intervention during the day, and we're looking at who we need to uh, attend after school with the State Children Program. But I just gave you an average for each grade level where they're at right now, and I also attached some of the type of reports, and just took the kids' names also, you could kind of get an idea of where each kid, we're not each kid, but where the different grade levels are. You have any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Riley, can, can you explain, like, I'm looking on this first page, it's got second grade average, and you got a two-point-two-eight?
So in the second grade, for the average out of all three classes, the students are reading on an average of like the second grade and a quarter.
Okay, so they're a little bit ahead, ahead of grade level.
Which, you know, that gives a lot of praise to first-grade teachers that we had last year, Ms. Bradley, Ms. Ratten, um, Ms. Thomas, thank you.
Well, well, that brings up a net, my second question. You see, uh, you start increasing by decreasing rate as the age gets.
Yeah, and usually makes a little bit of regression at the beginning. And so even like with the third grade average being second grade, two-point-seven, close to the end of the second grade, that's about the average. It doesn't really surprise me too much because of the summer regression. And, um, you know, they haven't received all the third-grade instruction, even though they are third graders, they have the whole year of literacy instruction left, so.
So it's really the wrong time to maybe pass that.
And that way, we can see the growth that they make throughout the year. Yes, sir.
That's right.
And this is something as part of learns, you know, one of the requirements is that monthly you will be presented with data for where our students are. And since we still don't have access to the interim test yet, but supposedly we're going to have them this year, we should have more coming in as they go through the year, and our teachers are going to be using those classroom tools more so that we can get that information, so we can kind of keep better baseline of where they're at throughout the course of the year.
The good thing about this assessment is we can screen the kids using it like three times during the year. So it's a big piece for our State Children Program, but it also helps a lot with special aid as well, because it gives us a data can. And on the full report that we have, you can also see like how much time the students spent on the test. So you have a student who took maybe forty minutes versus a student who took three. So, you know, we can look at that as well, and when we see that three-minute mark, we know that test result's probably not valid for that student, because they just flew through, so.
Yeah.
It takes a lot of numbers with that we put together, but overall, it really helps us, so we can see how intense the literacy interventions need to be at each grade level.
One question about the Cave Elementary School data report. If, if not, we'll turn over to Mike on the construction update. You'll.
Yeah, Paul's got some stuff too, so.
Yeah, sure.
All right, so my spokesman's not here, he's gone. Middle school parking lot, we finished last year, that there's no water standing, I could keep, I go out there when it's raining hard, and I hadn't seen any holding water over there. Football field parking lot, we finished it. Uh, the area between the football parking lot, we didn't finish it. Uh, they got, I think they told us not to do it. The little black area between those two. Cafeteria, we finished all that last year under budget. Uh, we only charged what it actually cost us. We didn't charge what we had budgeted for. Uh, the new parking lot in front of the gym's finished, new parking lot across from the cafeteria's finished, parking lot in front of the auditorium is finished to where we were instructed to stop. Um, but the parking lot itself outside is ready for concrete, asphalt, whatever you want to put on there. It's not going anywhere anymore. Half of it's been dug out to the hardpan, uh, over half of it, from the light pole to the the ditch down there. Uh, the other side of it is dug out some, but we, they told us just to get it in case there's gonna be a new building or something there sometime. But it's finished. Um, the dugouts, softball dugouts are done, finished. There's only one little strip of stuff that we gotta get. Matt's gonna do that when he comes back and touches up the, um, the area behind the gym. Underground drainage about, on the playground, I don't even know if any of you knew that was done, but we did all that too. It's got underground. There's no, the water goes underground instead of through the parking lot. Uh, the play gap, playground pavilions were erected enough at the last minute. We lost money on that deal, just to let you know. We had ten guys out there trying to hold those poles straight. Six yards of concrete on each one of them, a lot of concrete, and that, it was a ton of concrete. Uh, the three leaks in the school area that, uh, you told us about, we, uh, finished those, waiting on the rain to see if it's, to get the real test. We can't get our Mini-X over into that area where that one's leaking, where it was leaking. They did fix it with the, with the, um, windshield glue. And they dug some out to get the water where it would run away from the building. The walkway covers and the post along that walkway through that connects the schools was finished. The painter is having to come back and touch up some areas that flaked. Uh, he's having his paint rep come in to look at the paint, because it was guaranteed not to flake. And he's gonna fix all of that. But his paint rep is coming, they're gonna see what he, the paint people are gonna do for it. It was guaranteed not to flake off. Um, auditorium parking, it's already prepped for concrete, but I said, wanna go. If you decide to do concrete or asphalt or whatever, no sinkholes in it. Um, if there is one, just call us, we'll come out and fix them.
What are you talking about?
The big parking, auditorium parking lot. We used local contractors for everything we did. The heat and air guy was from Garden. Paul's from Garden, graduate from here. Um, everybody, now the guy, the painter was from, um, Bismarck, but he's a commercial painter, not a house painter. He, that's what he, his specialty was, and, um, you know, we went through three superintendents while we were doing this. So every superintendent had different things that they wanted done, so we did not do, um, the first guy wanted all the ditches redone and wanted, um, swells, put in all the ditches. We were gonna do that, but Dr. Vaughn came in, he wasn't, he didn't care about that. He didn't want to do that. He wanted to get other things done, so. If there was anything we didn't do from the very first day, we've done everything that we were instructed to do. Um, Paul's gonna tell you more about the, uh, the gym. Um, he's been very instrumental in, in what we were doing over there. Uh, I think I talked to the air conditioner and heat and air guy just a while ago. He'll tell you more about him, but other than that, are there any questions about what, anything else that we need to jump on or we need to do? I think we've finished everything on our punch list except for the gym and some repair on the awnings and, uh.
Mike, I was out here on Friday, and, and there was water standing out there, I think in two different places on that SB two.
Hmm.
Is that, it's gonna, that's just gonna get worse if it sets her all.
Where, where is that at?
It's in the very corner. I guess it would be this northeast, northwest.
Right here on the concrete?
It, it'd either be back this way, just right in that corner. I got a picture I can show it to you.
Are you talking where the buses come in and right here in this corner?
Yeah, yeah, well.
Not on the concrete.
Not on the concrete?
No.
No, no, it's in the, it's on the SB twos where, where the water was standing. It's right at the edge of the concrete.
Yeah, just show me a picture, we'll fix that.
I think there was two spots, I think. As far as, as far as that awning is concerned, I, I'm concerned about how they're gonna touch that up or fix that, because it, it's not, that, that, uh, you look at it and it's obviously not sticking. E- either the primers, the primer didn't stick to it in some places. And, and it's worse now than it was in August, so even just thirty days ago, it's not near as bad as it was just last week. I mean, there's, there's, there are big flakes coming off of that.
And he's gonna, he'll fix every one of them.
How do you think they'll fix that? I mean, they're gonna have to remove.
They'll have to remove a big area, reprime it. One of the reasons I think it happened is because some of it was still damp when they were doing some of the painting, when they came back and put the primer on it. I think some other part was still damp. The red iron part stuck pretty good. Some of the flashing is where most of the flaking's coming from. But that red iron is stuck to the red iron pretty good, but he's, from what Terry um, told him, they're gonna have to take sections of it off, grind it down, and then reprime it with, not with a sprayer, but with a, a brush to make it, to make it blend in with the rest of it.
I mean, because my thought is, is if, if this worsens now, this month, than it was in August, and, and I looked at it in both months, then if, if, if they don't go, and they're not gonna have to do, i- it, it would seem to me they can't just do sections to fix it. They're gonna have to redo everything, because it's just gonna progressively get worse than it already is. I mean, would, wouldn't you agree with that?
And he guaranteed his work. He's already said, he's got the, his rep coming from the paint company. They're supposed to come in, because they guaranteed it to him that it would not flake.
That guarantee is for how long?
Well, we're gonna fix it.
I mean, because it's been a year, and, and, and it's, it's obviously changed from what it was. It's changed the last two months.
We fixed everything that has messed up. If there's anything, we're gonna fix everything.
I would hate for it, to fix a section, and then two months later, all of a sudden, a section that didn't get touched is, is looking like these do now.
Well, I think his paint rep is gonna have a lot to do with that, too. They're gonna have to make all that good.
That's what I was gonna say. Uh, if, could you see it becoming a general liability issue with him?
With him?
If, if we fix it and it just keeps on moving forward?
I mean, if, 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 if the, if it was, if it was damp or moist when he painted it, is the primer guaranteed to stick to a moist, wet surface?
I don't know that. All, all I, all I can tell you is that he said that he's gonna have, every, the bit was guaranteed, the primer was guaranteed to stick. I'm saying that it might have been damp in those areas where I saw it, where it started, because it usually, the top part of it's usually the dampest part.
Well, it is puzzling, because it appears that the other side, which I did not look at Friday, but it appeared previously that the other side had stuck fairly well, or wasn't peeling, I guess I should say,
Yeah.
as the other side was peeling. Though it is interesting that it seems like one side's doing it worse than the other.
I've been looking at it. We guarantee everything we do. The, if you show me those pictures of the, the water standing, we'll fix that. So that's a quick fix. Don't tell them about that.
Yeah. The, uh, we will finish tomorrow. We'll have, uh, Johnson Controls come in Thursday to do a safety check. Uh, the main reason they're coming in is for the tag and the strobes. There is a strobe that's not working correctly. I don't know if it's because we pinched a wire during construction, or if it's just faulty. They're gonna figure that out and fix the problem. They've allowed four hours to fix that. As soon as they get that fixed, they will tag the system, and you can let students back in. All the heat and air is working. Where staff and kids will be, the only part that's not working is the electrical room. Uh, there's something wrong with the communication between the head unit and the con, the condenser. So we have a, a computer problem, basically, a module that we might have to replace. Uh, those things are pretty complicated, and so he's having to work with a rep from the factory on trying to figure out what the problem is. So he has that phone call scheduled. Uh, he was concentrating on everything on the interior, and as soon as he got done with that, is, it's rained every day, and he's asking to wait. We've been watching the weather. He's waited, he's asking to wait until he can get a couple of sunny days to get up there and take that unit off the roof, uh, so that we don't damage anything on the interior. Um, I know there was concerns about the gutter. Are y'all still concerned about that?
I guess you're talking about me.
Anybody.
Well, I, I, I'm looking at the gutter, I mean, the, the, and I know this morphed, I know this whole thing morphed into probably more than it initially was at the beginning, whereas it was seemed to be just air conditioner, and then it turned into, you know, we got dirt work at the end of the building, now we got, we got gutters that are, you know, I was told there was water that runs in sheets off the end of that thing.
Yeah.
And so obviously, it would make sense, at least in my amateur mind, to, to have a gutter system there, so you don't have, you know, water pouring into something that's that expensive. Um, but it, you know, I mean, when you walk up there and look at it, there's a section that there's no gutter on, on, on this end down here.
Yes.
And I mean, it's not much, but when you look at it, I, I look at it and I wonder why.
I get that. Uh, cosmetically, it's not perfect. Um, it was not part of the original plan as far as the architect's tree. There was no gutter work on that end. And as we worked on the job, my concern became that much water coming into those units. I just didn't, I didn't think that that could be any ben, it was not beneficial in any way. So I suggested that we add gutters to that. Uh, the way the building is building with, with the standing seam roof and the way that the cosmetic metal is around the, the fascia up there, um, there's a drip edge, and you, when you put a gutter on, you wanna be under that drip edge, because that's what keeps the water from getting into the building or next to the building and working its way in to make, uh, to damage the building. So when we put that gutter up, as it gets to that inside corner where that turns back out in the center, and then that outside corner where it turns around the building, when we put that gutter in, we, we slid it up underneath it, but I can't get it. It tightens up as it gets to those corners. So the only way cosmetically I could have done it was to cut that part off and, and let it go to that corner, but then I run the risk of that last twelve inches getting back into that trim work of that metal, and so, uh, because it's on the exterior of that drip edge, I would rather have everything under the drip edge in that last twelve inches just come off of the roof line, because it, the, the, the heat and air units are protected now. It, it goes more than enough to protect those, so, uh, we're basically left with those two sections on each side where there's, there's a rainwater coming off.
The only other, the other concern that I would have, again, I'm an amateur when it comes to gutters. But when I'm, when I'm looking at those gutters and I'm looking at those downspouts, those downspouts go down almost and touch that ground.
Yeah.
And so that dirt is soft, and so this spring, this winter, the spring, when it rains, if there's that, is, is much water as I was told comes off the end of that building. And so that dirt is soft, and so this spring, this winter, the spring when it rains, if there's that, as much water as I was told comes off the end of that building. And those downspouts come down where they are, and the ground outside that is higher, is going to puddle and pool that water or pond that water right up against that foundation. Wouldn't it? And so I'm just, I'm just concerned, is it going to wash that dirt and then damage that slab or make that slab not stable? The way it's, the way it was sitting last Friday, I, I can't speak since last Friday, but.
When we put the dirt in, we were trying to get the dirt sloped away from the building. And we did that even from the past, like, what you're seeing on that dirt, we brought in probably six loads of red clay gravel in that area. And that's packed in, and then we dressed it up with the topsoil on top so that it would be easier to maintain and get grass started after. If you go around most of the buildings, most of them have very little topsoil, it's mainly red clay gravel, and the grass has, has, has started coming up, you know, it's grown in, but it's just, it's a process of putting the dirt in and trying to get it all, once this rain's done, it'll be packed more than it was when we put it in, it's pretty fluffy right off the bat. As far as those, the downspouts, if you want them raised up a couple inches, that, I don't, that's easy.
It's not, it's not necessarily that I want them raised up, I'm just concerned about if there's that much water that comes off, you got four downspouts, two of them are right up against the edge of that slab. Is, is that make, is that going to endanger the dirt work that's under that slab?
The best way to avoid that, I can't, I don't, I would have to study and make sure on what I'm saying as far as advice, but the best way to fix the problem would be to put some piping in the ground that gets it down to the bottom of the hill. Then we would, we would never have a problem with it.
That would make sense to me, but again, I'm not in construction.
And I'd be happy to do that.
I, I just, I mean, I think this project is what, nine hundred thousand or something, am I correct on that? Anyway, I think that was the first estimate we were given was somewhere in that neighborhood. I, I just, I wouldn't want the whole thing to go washing down toward the river.
I agree with you, not over some rainwater.
Those are just things that I personally saw when I, when I was walking around and looking at it.
It would be an additional expense as far as the gutters weren't part of the original plan, so we had done some trading, because we swapped out, we were supposed to take the, the fans out of the, of the roof or the ceiling and the lubers and put in windows. But one of the, if I own that building myself, and it's always a backup, and it's worked for how many adults that built twenty-six years old, somewhere like that. So if that heat and air unit ever breaks down, which they all do eventually, you have a backup plan that can, that can work as far as keeping that building comfortable, keeping the humidity out, keeping airflow, because airflow is what gets the moisture to evaporate, so I suggested that we leave them in place as a backup, or as, they're going to be expensive to operate, they're huge. So if it's a pretty day and you don't want to run them, run the cheaper fans. So we, we suggested that and everybody agreed to that. But I don't, I don't have those pipes as part of, and I, I don't think it'd be more than a few thousand dollars to get all that done and get it done correctly, if y'all want to add piping to get that water completely away from that area. So that's up to, if y'all are interested, I'll certainly come up with an official estimate.
Back to the gun, you're saying that it was the lesser two eagles to shorten that?
I think it, well, I couldn't get it in anytime, but cosmetically I could have ran it to the outside. But I, when you do that, you run the risk of the water getting behind the gutter. And when we, we attach those, you know, everything is screwed up there, and so then that screw gets in there to behind the metal instead of on the outside of that drip edge, because that drip edge comes up underneath. You have a little bit of overhang where that, that standing seam roof is. And when that drip edge comes out, it has a little bit of a lip that, when it does that, it pushes that water away from the building and lets it drop down to the ground.
And that was one of the problems with this room over here getting water in it, that was getting behind the brick, the water.
So. Anything?
I mean, I I don't know, I think it is the right thing to do, I think that's what we should do, but I, I don't, I don't know that I'm, I'm the person to decide if that's it. But that is my concern, have you looked at that, Rodney?
From a broad stroke standpoint, I have, but not that particular detail, I hadn't looked at it close enough.
The cheapest way, they have, they have extensions on.
Well, that's what I was going to say.
You can run an extension forty feet out there, it hooks on to the bottom of your downspout. And you can run it on top of the ground and run it down there till your grass starts growing.
Once the grass is, or you can take it out.
You can do a temporary fix until the grass does come in.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in favor of the temporary fix, I'd be in favor of the permanent fix.
Well, until your grass starts growing.
Yeah, the grass, big permanent fix, you didn't stabilize that ground.
But either way is easy fix. Do you want to do a walkthrough on it? This week and maybe discuss it?
You know, look, I'm struggling to just figure out what my role in this whole thing is, to be honest with you, anyway, as I sit here in this chair, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not here to unilaterally make a decision for anybody here, I, I'm just bringing up my concerns of what, when I look at it, what I, what I see, so I.
I think that.
My decision, that's for sure.
I know sometimes it's easier to understand something if we, if we look at it together and discuss how the water would react, you know, and what we could do with it.
I, I think in that situation that that would probably be best for you, Terry, Mike, Ms. Wolf, and maybe Kendall to look at and see what you guys think, not, not me. I mean, but that is what my, that's my concern is, you know, looking at it.
Get the estimate on those, like the temporarys fix.
I'm going to get with French before we talk about estimates on anything else. I'm, I'm going to get with the architects, because we do still have some things we need to work out on that.
We appreciate y'all coming.
Yeah. Thank you, if you need anything, just give us a call.
Thank you, thanks, Mike. Next item, future business, do we have any future business we need to talk about?
Other than the next board meeting, I don't think so.
Yeah, just next board meeting is October fifteenth. If not, I have a motion to adjourn. We have motion, say it all in favor of that motion, say aye, all in dissent, same sign, we are adjourned.